Lowercase.
All caps, three dots.
Yep. One, two, three.
So it's working on YouTube, but it's not working on Facebook.
Just go back to go to live.
Live on Facebook.
Nope, it just wants to continue as Diane, it won't give me an option to Plain City.
I don't want it on my Facebook page.
I don't want anything on my Facebook page.
Yeah.
We're just gonna roll without Facebook tonight?
Yep.
We might have to.
We're on YouTube.
Alright, we'll roll. Alright, well, we're gonna call this city council meeting to order tonight, the sixth day of February of twenty twenty-five. Um, I'm gonna lead us in a, or no, Councilman Jenkins is gonna lead us in the pledge and I'll give us the word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to come to city council tonight and we're grateful for the city that we live in and and those that protect it. Please watch over and protect them as they serve us diligently. We're thankful for our military folks and all that they do and watch over and protect them wherever they might be. Uh, we're grateful for all that we have here in Plain City and the freedoms that we enjoy and please watch over and protect us and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, left my glass in the office. Alright, first order of business is approval of the minutes from the sixteenth. Did anybody see any corrections? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from the meeting of what was this? January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 There she is. Alright, next is public comments. I don't see anybody here from the public. Is anybody on Zoom? Okay. Uh, planning commission report. Blake Jenkins. Chairman.
Alright. Okay, so last planning commission, we had a couple of things. Number one, we changed the definition of the front lot line. We had an issue pop up where somebody came in with a corner lot and they said that the definition that we had today meant that they could count both sides of the corner lot as the front lot line. Uh, we read into it. It was a little gray area, so we just redefined it and specifically said one side. Uh, I think that's coming to you guys for approval. I don't know if it's this week.
It's not tonight.
Probably next week or two weeks. Next, we had Bonavista come in. We've had a little bit of an issue with a will serve letter versus an availability letter. Do you guys know how that works? So you go in, you apply. And before they do anything, they'll give you, they'll look at your location and they'll give you an availability letter and say culinary water is available at your address. And then after that, you, they come out and investigate and they make sure that you have all your stuff in order. They'll make sure that you have secondary water lined up. And after you pay the fees, then they will give you a will serve letter. And so we have pushed to require these developers to bring a will serve letter instead of an availability letter. And we've been getting mixed feedback that Bonavista won't provide that, that they would only provide availability. So we had Bonavista come out, they actually talked to us. And they admitted that there have been some instances where things have fallen through the cracks and they did not do will serve letters. So I think the mixed messaging was truly happening. But we are now going to be firm. No approvals without a will serve letter.
You require those for water, gas, electric?
Yes.
Everything, right?
And Bonavista does all the research themselves to make sure that everything lines up. Then they'll give the will serve letter and then we're good.
Yep.
Did, I know, I had the opportunity to attend the meeting the other night as a fly on the wall. Did they figure out when they were gonna do that in the process? I know that we're back and forth on that quite a bit.
Actually, don't know. I was unable to attend, so.
Not a big deal, it's just a-
What process is that? I've been talking about quite a bit this week.
The development review and all that, when they're gonna actually trigger, when it'll need to be that, because I think the worry was developer didn't wanna pay the fees if the, the planning commission hadn't accepted it, right, for the approval?
So that was one of the concerns. You go through the whole process, you pay fees, you get denied.
Yeah.
And there's even concerns that in some instances, you're required to turn in your water shares. And then you don't know if you're getting approved or not. And so there's a lot of anxiety around that. Um, from my understanding, Bonavista is going to start charging the fees at the time of the availability letter versus the later on.
So they'll hold those funds and give them back if?
Uh, I would imagine some of the fees are probably non-refundable.
I would assume some are like-
As part of the investigation and-
Engineering, research and stuff, yeah, I can see that.
So, it's been, it's been a pain point for us and hopefully it's, we're through it.
Okay.
Alright, next we talked about opening up the general plan. So that's gonna be happening this year. Before they get too far into it, they want to wait to see what kind of funding they're gonna have after April, I believe is when we see if the grant goes through. So, uh, it's gonna get opened regardless, but hopefully we get that grant money. So they're, they're starting to kinda frame out how it's gonna look. And then the last thing was, we had, uh, the preliminary review for Marsh Mountain View subdivision, which is gonna be on twenty-two hundred north, thirty-four fifty west. So just south of the, the church over by the elementary. So they originally came in a couple of months ago and they pitched some cluster subdivisions. And it was, they had a lot of trouble with the design and a lot of negative feedback from the community, so they withdrew that plan and now they're coming back with eighteen fives, which is what it's zoned, so. Should go through no problem.
Nice.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Hey, uh, stay there for just one second. I'm pretty sure this will be Blake's last item of business. Um, wanna thank you for five years of being away from your family and the sacrifice that entails a little bit, right? And thank you for doing a diligent job and taking the chair position. That's, that's awesome. We will get a, a placard made up for you and we'll present that to you as soon as we get that back.
Thank you.
But thank you very much on behalf of everybody.
I appreciate that.
I'd also like to echo what the mayor just said and, and like I said a minute ago, I was able to attend the meeting the other night. It was good to get a perspective just in the back of the room there. There's a lot of things that you guys have to vet through and, and all the codes and everything. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No, and mayor, I wanna thank you for the opportunity. It's, it's been fun. It's been a good five years and
It's a good education, isn't it?
It is. It's a great city. I wish more people would get involved, cuz there's a lot, there's a lot to it that people don't see, so.
Yeah.
It's been fun and I appreciate it.
Yep, okay, appreciate ya.
Thanks, Chairman Jenkins.
Yep, thank you.
Alright. Let's see, discussion motion to appoint up, to the planning commission. Um, let's take care of first things first and um, I'd like to appoint Rob to the vacant seat, the ten-second vacant seat. He's been on the, he's been the alternate for five years. I thought it was longer, cuz it just seems like you've been waiting in the wings for so long. But we've just had a steady, steady commission and, and so appreciate ya holding out. Ask for a motion. To appoint Rob.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rob for the full-time planning commission position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And then to fill the alternate position, um, I've inter- interviewed the two applicants. Um, I asked them the same questions and I chose the one that aligned with, with my beliefs. Um, I think he's qualified. We're really not here to uh, find somebody that's gonna be a phenomenal city recorder or a phenomenal public works director or rec director. What we're doing here is finding people that wanna get involved in the city. It is a learning curve, no matter who gets in it. And, uh, I've chose Josh Abelman to, to appoint to that position. He's a third generation lifetime, uh, resident of Plain City. He's been involved in the city. I can't tell you how many times I've gotten phone calls from him asking me questions about this, that or the other on developments and on, on just things going on in the city and how to get involved. Um, he's, he's always been very active that way. And he has a good knowledge of ordinances and codes. And so I've selected, um, Josh to, uh, be appointed to, as the alternate. Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Okay.
Um, after reading the city code, I'd like to do some more vetting, cuz I don't think that the city council has had time to really vet the candidates like you have mayor. And I would just like to have that opportunity to do it, so I'd like to table, um, the appointment of the alternate at this point in time until we can maybe, as a council, sit down and do some vetting ourselves.
So, I've been doing this seven years. I've appointed eight people. Um, some of them were renewals. And in all previous councils and Brandon, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's always been the mayor appoints and the council members either confirm or deny that appointment, correct?
Yeah, so you suggest an appointment and then it's, I mean, the way the code says is advice and consent of the council, so they've got to vote to consent to the appointment. So, it's not defined further, you know, other than just what I sent out earlier, but that's, that's the format of it, so, yeah.
Do we have, is Josh on Zoom? I know he's in Arizona or he would be here. Let's, yeah, you can unmute him. And if anybody has any questions for Josh, he's more than welcome to give you a spill or, or answer any questions, however you'd like to.
Is the other candidate also on Zoom?
No, he's not.
Oh, then I don't think we should really talk to one or not the other. That's just my opinion.
So I will, I will say that my biggest deciding factor was their, their outlook on the future look of Plain City and the way it develops out. One was in favor of, of building out for affordable housing and multifamily housing. And the other was not. And that was one of my deciding factors in that decision. Are you gonna tip your water over?
Uh-oh.
Oh yeah, it's close.
Um, I'm not sure, I guess my comments, I'm not sure if anybody agrees disagrees with, with your appointment, mayor. I just think that for me, it would be the transparency. I'd like to ask them questions with this body where everybody can hear their answers and then-
Yeah, go ahead.
The problem is, is the other candidate's not on Zoom.
What's that?
The other candidate's not on Zoom, so we can't ans- ask him-
We're not interviewing the other candidate.
We don't choose, you, mayor chooses. And then we can either say, we don't want that or we do.
Confirm or deny.
But I can't give consent to something that I don't know both sides of it. See what I'm saying? So it'd be nice to be transparent. Just ask the questions and then we can make a decision.
That's really never been the policy. I mean, you two were both appointed and that process was not, right?
I'm just trying to be transparent.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
So from my understanding, the council's not voting between two candidates. So there should not be two interviews between the candidates. The mayor is appointing somebody and the council is saying yes or no to that person. So the person that he's not appointing tonight, we shouldn't be talking about that at all, right? Because that person is not up for appointment. So the person that is up for appointment is here to be asked questions. So my thought would be, and according to the process that I went through, is the person up for appointment may be asked questions, but that is who are, is being voted on tonight, not the other person.
Yeah, thank you.
Same thing happened when me and Jed.
Yep. Right.
So, if, if anybody would like to ask Josh any questions?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can ask Josh the same. Can you ask him the same questions that you asked him when you interviewed him?
Mm-hmm. Uh, Josh, why do you wanna serve on the city council or the planning commission?
Uh, well, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go, yep.
Okay. So honestly, I've been a lifetime uh, citizen of Plain City, I'm third generation of Plain City. Um, I've seen a lot of growth happen in Plain City and my biggest thing is, is I don't think we can stop the growth, but I think that we can control the growth responsibly. And we've got a general plan for a reason. Uh, we spent a lot of money to, uh, implement that general plan. And I just, I wanna make sure, you know, have my say though in sticking to that general plan. I see a lot of times we tend to, you know, move away from the general plan on certain things. I would like to more stay to the general plan that the citizens help put together.
Okay, um, how do you see the future of Plain City build out?
Well, it depends on, you know, I think that our surrounding communities are gonna affect the future of Plain City quite a bit, you know, with, uh, with the Christianson development that the county pushed through. It's growing and it's growing fast and I would just hope that we can grow it responsibly.
You, sorry, say that again. I, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I apologize.
So right now, where, where the city is right now, uh, we've got the general plan. And I think as long as we stick to that general plan, we continue to grow and grow responsibly. I'm just, I don't wanna see, you know, we have the development, the Christianson, Esther Development, whatever you wanna call that, the county decided it was in our best interest that they push that through. Um, I see developments like that. I get worried about the growth of Plain City and I, I worry that our, our tax base can keep up with our infrastructure and if we end up growing too fast, so I've pretty much control the growth, you know, allow it to grow responsibly and not out of control.
How would you control the growth, Josh?
Well, follow our general plan, which is our biggest thing in the office. Our general plan shows an area that's zoned eighteen five. I believe that if it's RE twenty, then we can change it to eighteen five. But I don't see the purpose of changing something that our general plan's showing eighteen five and changing it to RE fifteen. I was a big proponent, well, a proponent on the whole zoning of the eighteen five uh, during the Penunzio subdivision, you know, when Randy Marriott wanted that to be zoned RE fifteen, but at the time, our general plan showed it'd be an RE eighteen five and yet we didn't have an RE sixteen five zoning. So I was a big part of that being changed a little bit late, but changed it to an RE five. I think the biggest thing is, is, you know, the developers are there to make money. We all know that there, and if I was a developer, I would try to zone my ground for the smallest lots I could, that's where I'm gonna make the most amount of money. That's why as, you know, a planning commissioner, we give our input to the city council that actually does the, the approval of that. I think our responsibility to, to make sure that they're aware of what our general plan is and why we created the general plan.
One of, one of my other questions, you want me to?
Oh, go ahead. I got one too. Go ahead.
Um, one of my other questions I asked him was, what do you bring to the planning commission?
Um, I feel like I have a lot of knowledge with, uh, city codes. I feel like I have a probably looked at our general plan most, more than, uh, the large majority of our citizens. I've also was in the construction industry for fifteen years. I did a lot of development, a lot of responsible development, dealt a lot with other cities, large cities, uh. Currently, I work at Hill Air Force Base. I've been up at Hill Air Force Base for fifteen years. I'm actually a lead planner up at Hill Air Force Base and I also do, uh, custom farming on, on the side. More of a full-time job anyway. I run about two hundred acres by myself, which helped my dad throughout Plain City and, uh, our neighboring communities. And I've been here my whole life. I've seen it grow. I've seen the good growth and I've also seen some bad growth. You know, voicing, continuing our, uh, more good growth than bad.
What was the fourth question I asked you? I don't have my notes here.
Honestly, mayor, I was, uh, sitting by a pool when you asked me those questions, so I'm not sure I could-
I was in my other truck too. Um, any, go ahead.
The only other question I have, unless you can think of that one, mayor, would be, um, what's your understanding of development agreements and your thoughts on that process?
As far as development agreements go, are we talking zoning? Are we talking what we adhere to developers to prior to starting the development and then after the development, you know?
So, develop, a development agreement is basically overriding the zoning and using this as your, your new layout, right? You, you put the general plan aside. The planning commission, I mean, the city council will have to approve that as well. But, um, working through the planning commission, they'll create whatever subdivision they see fit and basically neglect the future land use map at that point.
Well, I think there is some instance, instances when you can look at it with some common sense. Maybe when the general plan was put in place, it fit a certain instance and sometimes, you know, there's things that shouldn't be changed. I know that, uh, the development over at the old elementary school, I'm not sure if that was in the general plan originally, but that ended up being a really good development for the city. It kept our, kind of our higher density in the central part of the city, so.
So they, they actually created, um, a senior overlay for that. But that basically stemmed from, the creation of that senior overlay basically stemmed from what would have looked like a development agreement. So, um, that's how that senior housing even came to be as a overlay, so.
I thought of one more. Last question.
Let her rip.
Um, your thoughts on the general plan? You already kinda talked about that, Josh. What about updates to the general plan? What are your thoughts about updates? Not necessarily to change things now, but just in general. Or maybe to change things now, I don't know. However you wanna answer it, I guess.
Well, I think that, and I, our general plan, I'm not sure how many years goes by before we redo the general plan, but I do believe that it does need to be updated. But I believe that it needs to be updated with the best interest of our citizens involved, rather than the best interest of the developer. That, that's my biggest thing. I, I see a lot of look at Steel Creek subdivision, you know, the homeowners that are moving into Steel Creek subdivision. We allow that subdivision to be built in swamps and the people that live there, they're not necessarily going out of their way to do their due diligence when they buy a place to live. They're hoping that everything's up to code and everything works out. But at the end of the day, you know, it's our planning commission, it's our city council members, you know, our mayor somewhat that they're supposed to be looking out for the best interest of our citizens. But when it comes to updating the general plan, if we can look at it and we feel like our, you know, from input of the citizens, they're back in their best interest, then yeah, I think it needs to be updated along the way.
Okay. Councilwoman Wilson, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Well, I, this is Jed, Jan. I think that, uh, Commissioner Jenkins brings up some good points, or a good point, that, uh, not only it's, it's always been this way and, you know, the code doesn't fight against that, that, uh, the mayor can appoint and then the city council has the job not to argue between two candidates, but we have the, uh, right, we have, it's upon us to then vote yes or no.
Agreed.
That's, that's the way I see it.
Yeah.
It's kinda similar almost. I mean, it's less complicated, but it's kinda similar to how we're seeing President Trump appointing cabinet members, right? So he appoints and then the senate brings them in and of course, it's a lot more complicated, but they ask them all those questions and whatnot. And then they have to either vo- vote okay, yes, or no to that person, but they're not saying, okay, well, who else were you considering president and will pick? So it's, it's kinda similar to that if that makes sense. I agree. I mean, you're appointing and then you certainly have the right to vet the candidate like you've had and then make a decision.
And, and I'd have appreciated that. That's what I was asking for, just to make sure that not only myself, but everybody else listening can hear what Josh has to bring to the table.
Oh yeah, yeah, we, we've done that with every appointment.
And, and Josh, I appreciate, appreciate you being here and doing that for us. I guess you're not here, but you're here. How's that?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity.
Ready for a motion?
So any other discussion? If not, ask for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Josh Abelman as the planning commission alternate appointment by Mayor Beasley.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Welcome to the planning commission, Josh. We'll get you a book and you can start reading.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time, councilman.
Yeah, you get home when this weekend?
Uh, leaving Buckeye tomorrow morning and, uh, working our way that way.
Don't miss your first meeting, man.
Oh, we'll be home by Sunday.
Alright. Okay, thank you. Uh, enjoy your vacation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, council. Um, final acceptance of BB's place. This is the one just going right off the bluff, off twenty-two hundred. Uh, you saw Dan's letter and you saw engineer's letter. Looks like everything's in place. Any questions for Dan?
Oh, I gotta come up with something, Dan. How's your night, Dan? Yep.
How you doing?
That might be the only question I have, so.
Alright, how about a motion?
Yeah, if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, or for final acceptance of BB's place subdivision.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Easter egg money. Can we give the Lions Club some money to go buy some candy?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion. Can you hear me, John?
Yep, I gotcha.
Looked into this and as long as they're not being, buying real eggs, we should be covered with some help.
As long as we're not buying real eggs. Oh yeah, we're not buying real eggs like we used to, Jen.
Well played, well played.
Yeah, you know, so I would, um, make a motion that we approve the two thousand, um, dollar budget for the Easter egg hunt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jen. Alright, uh, business licenses. There's a whole slew of them. I'm not, I'm not reading them again. Oh, we got a few new ones, okay. Let me find them. I don't have my glasses.
Let's see.
I might be able to-
Cleaning business and therapeutic massage is the new, home occupation and then a yarn shop is commercial. Perfectly new ones.
I thought the yarn shop was last time.
I don't remember if that was, I think, I think the planning commission just
Oh, told us.
Um, reported on, on it and then now they're actually getting their license, so.
Okay, perfect.
Yep. How about a motion on business licenses?
Motion to approve business licenses as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, should we pay the bills?
Sure. Give us a chance.
I, I see flock cameras on there, so does that mean we're a hundred percent up and running now on the, oh, the flock is, oh, is it, okay.
Yeah, flock is our, our license plate.
License plate, right?
There's six of them?
Yeah, yeah, they're three thousand a year.
Yep. I promise it's worth it.
And they are worth every penny
Yes.
we will ever spend on them.
They have been, so, yes.
It helps us out a lot.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, I move to approve the warrant reg, or for payment of the warrant register for January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to, uh, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Alright, roll call.
Uh, I was gonna say aye. What do we say?
Yes, yes, I.
There you go.
I am, I or yes mean the same.
I don't, I don't know why we switch that up.
Yes.
Every time it throws me off.
Yes.
And councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Probably cause I asked a question, can we pay the bills? And the answer's usually yes, right? Not aye to a, should we?
Is that what it is? I've been meaning to ask.
Maybe that's why. Alright, council reports. Uh, councilwoman Wilson, do you have anything to report?
Not as today.
Alright, councilman Fabel?
Uh, nothing to report.
Councilman Penunzio?
Nothing to report.
Councilman Jenkins?
I usually don't report anything, but I just wanna make a comment on the Lions Club Easter egg, uh, Easter egg hunt. Um, they've been doing it for decades. Everybody in Plain City knows that. What's cool now though, and most people probably know this, is they have. Uh, they have some beeping eggs for the hearing impaired. So they are going to have a section for uh, special needs, hearing impaired children. So spread the word, uh, it's awesome what the Lions Club does every year for the city.
Yeah, they're also for the blind.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but it's, it's for, it's for any.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's for any, any kids that just need that extra little help and it's, it's super fun. They started it, what, three years ago?
Yeah, three or so years ago.
The, the Lions Club bought those eggs and they're not cheap. Um, and what, one thing that's great about Lions Club is they'll, they'll send them to other cities to be used as well. And so, yeah, they're, they were a great addition to the Lions Club and to our Easter egg hunt. I think it's been three or four years that we've had those eggs and, yeah, the participation's getting better. Um, I do have some report. So today I spent half of the day down at the Capitol. Um, I was invited to present again, um, asking for a, a little assistance. Uh, with our, our sewer projects. Uh, we asked for three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, Cal, uh, Senator Cal Musselman sponsored that for us down there. And uh, him and I had a great chat and, and he feels pretty confident that uh, we got a good shot at getting that, so. Um, I sat on the floor with our representative, Matthew Gwynn, and he's actually gonna come and report to us next meeting. Um, just give us a, a quick update on how the session's running and, and stuff like that. I um, finally got him pinned down on a time, so um, we'll have that on the agenda. Uh, hopefully he doesn't get tied up down there and he can come and chat with us. Um, outside of that. Um, I don't believe I have anything else. So anything else from anybody?
Hey, John, can I say something?
Yes.
Um, our auditor is, sent me a letter saying that he's no longer gonna be doing it. He's merging his office with Ryan Childs, so therefore it would be a conflict of interest for him to do that.
Yeah.
So we are gonna need to put an RFP out. Um, Ryan and I have been working on that.
Okay.
Um, and Brandon, maybe this is a question for you. Does it ha, does RFP have to be approved by the city council? Or can we just put it out there?
The actual language of it?
Yeah.
No, that, the language does it. I mean, obviously when it comes time for appointment, then it's the same process.
So, so, so we can put out that RFP right away then?
Right.
Okay, and then let you know what we find out once we get some applicants. I just wanted you to have a heads up on that.
That's, that's gonna be affirmed to reckon with, pretty soon. Those guys are both great, so, good for them. Okay, anybody else? Alright, let's have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. So, so apparently, um.
Recording stopped.
Or freshman uh, legislators, when they do their, run their first bill, everybody votes no.
Really?
First, so the whole board turns red. And then they go back and vote yes. But it's just kind of a, so there was two freshmen, yeah, it's kind of initiation thing.
Just see it like, oh man.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if you didn't know that they did that.
Yeah.
Off to work.
Okay, thank you. Yesterday, yeah.
Fifty?
Fifty.
You're just a youngin'.
Twenty-five years and two seventy years. Yeah, I wish I was a baby. Wish I felt like a baby.
Got those signed? Okay, thank you. Figure out, it was streamed on YouTube and then I put the link on there, but it wanted to connect.
Blake, really, thank you.
I don't wanna.
Rob, congrats. It's been a long time waiting.